Oh, good evening. Welcome to the A-6 Town Council Workshop. This evening's workshop pertains to, well, actually I'll let Tom mention it so he can probably do better.
The larger issue is something called small cell technology, but there's a specific proposal from Verizon Wireless Solutions regarding two different facilities potentially on town-owned infrastructure. But we'd like to kind of start the conversation on a broader level, and I think Dan has perhaps some introductory comments. This council is still a bit fresh coming off a pretty major rewrite of your cell phone ordinance. So both, you might be able to talk about how this fits in that context first.
Sure. And I think most of the council was seated and working on this last fall, but for I think Councilor Hayes and Baybine. And as the rest of the council likely remembers, it's a very kind of in-depth thorough update to allowing for enhanced wireless coverage, but in a pretty deliberate way, a pretty thoughtful way. And the new ordinance that really hasn't been used much yet since its passage in the fall. As many councils probably remember, there's a priority of location. There's preferences for the type of wireless antennas that are applied for and approved in town. Preferring that antennas be attached to existing towers if possible to improve coverage. If that's not a possibility, site a new cell tower in our industrial zones where it's the most compatible from a land use standpoint. If that's not going to work for the coverage improvements, then consider what the ordinance calls telecommunications facilities, which are the antennas that are attached to buildings or structures that are more kind of stealth than a new tower, which we think this technology kind of falls into that category. And then finally, the council allowed for new cell towers more in our, kind of, some of our select rural areas where coverage was most lacking and based on study, coverage could be improved. And there's very high standards for the acreage needed for that, et cetera. So as now the New Year's beginning and underway, there's more interest in moving forward with projects under this ordinance. And Chip and his group have approached Tom and I with kind of a technology that wasn't really discussed during your process. We did discuss the DAS technology, Distributed Antenna Systems, which is, we covered that very thoroughly, where those are antennas that are typically located on utility poles and are connected together by wires. And through discussion, the council decided to prohibit those in residential areas in particular because there was concerns about compatibility and aesthetics and that type of thing. This technology, and Chip is an expert in it and can explain the differences, is similar but different from that in that it doesn't have interconnections in terms of the wiring. It's a different system, and they in fact aren't proposing them on utility poles, electrical transmission poles. But again, they're similar technologies. This proposal through Verizon is for a couple of locations in our more of our commercial area. One in Oak Hill and one up at the Cabela's area. And they serve smaller areas in terms of enhanced coverage and data coverage. Verizon's before you kind of pursuing a lease agreement with the town would maybe some potential to add additional ones, subject to some type of town approval, whether it's council or Tom or others. And that would only be the first step. They still would need to go through permitting. They wouldn't be exempt from planning board and... Verizon's the first carrier to approach the town, but there are others out there that are interested in talking to the town about kind of similar installations on other town infrastructure, whether it's a town building or another town, you know, structure like a light pole or something like that. So it seems like an emerging technology that can kind of serve smaller areas that they may approach the town in the future on. And if the town decides not to move forward with it, they probably can, you know, serve these areas in different ways with kind of private property owners, I imagine, but Chip would stand on that. So I think that's a little introduction as to how the ordinance kind of fits into this proposal. And turn it back to you, Jessica.
Well, if you say, if you wouldn't mind just maybe explaining the difference between this technology versus what we've already kind of worked in.
This is Chip. This is Phil Soffler.
I wonder why that's so familiar.
From Information Act meeting we did.
Let me point in the right direction.
One of the town attorneys from Bernstein Shore, Phil Soffler.
I was looking at him going, I didn't remember him. I didn't even remember him working for Verizon.
Yeah, sure.
And I actually don't have much to add at this point. Dan just asked me to come along. Kate, you had some detailed questions to give up on the ordinance. I reviewed it. I wasn't involved in all the information, obviously. But I reviewed it as you were going through the process.
Okay.
We're on the legal act versus the law.
And again, the reason that we've encouraged this to come to the council first as opposed to going right to planning board or zoning board as may be required is really because fundamentally they're proposing it on town infrastructure. So if that's not something we're interested in, we should give them that word sooner than later. So rather than putting everyone through that process and then deciding that we didn't want it at these locations, let's just go to that first. So that's really why we're here.
I know. Well, if we could just explain where we've already recently had this issue. I'm interested to hear him explain what the difference is.
Thank you, folks. Again, Chip for that here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Some of you may recognize me from our discussions in the last year and a half regarding the provision of the zoning ordinance. That was of course done in part because the lag is somewhat antiquated and Verizon Wireless will have to come in and provide really a basic level voice and data connectivity to its subscribers in Scarborough. So east side of the highway, we have fairly good coverage, but as everyone knows, most folks on the west side of Scarborough, coverage is really poor. So we were in front of you then talking about how, like Dan mentioned, ways to revise the ordinance that it works for everybody. And we believe that the ordinance that you have adopted in place now will work for us. We're discussing then again macro technology. Now there's this new technology that Verizon is taking really full steam ahead called small cell technology.
And it's just that, they are small cells. So taking a step back, all of the carriers, as some of you may know, are licensed to operate certain bands. And that's, those are county by county licenses. Verizon Wireless has been operating on three of its four bands currently. There's a fourth band. It's a very high frequency, 2,200 megahertz. And they want to use that through its small cell technology, okay? The higher the frequency band, the weaker the signal, it doesn't travel as far. So it's kind of, it's a great match to use with this small cell technology. While we've got coverage along Route 1, it's not enough. So the purpose of the small cell technology is to provide capacity, basically to provide demand or supply to the demand in areas that are densely populated or used heavily. Again, as I mentioned, we're talking about two proposals currently with the town. One is at Cabela's and then the other is over on Haniford Drive for the supermarket. There are two other proposals, two other sites are that we're looking at along Route 1 but they're not on town property. But regarding those two locations, the idea there is that when you have your smartphone and you're over in that area of town, I said it's in that parking lot, in that shopping center or over at Haniford, your phone will be, is naturally pre-programmed to go to the strongest signal. So it would go to that. And by virtue of that, you take the load off of the site that you were currently getting, you were previously getting signal from, hence capacity. So here at Haniford, we're going to use the site on the light pole and away we go. So that we relieve the capacity on that site in the small cell in efficient, easy way to provide additional coverage is doing its job. So it's not an appropriate technology to use per se in a residential, in a residential area like the west side of Scarborough. We've got a lot of trees and you get a higher lot size out there where, you know, three to five acre lot, spread out. It works better when you've got less density coverage and you've got people there. Outside of malls, downtown Portland, we've got 40 or 50 planned for downtown Portland. But it wouldn't, again, it wouldn't work on the west side of Scarborough, which is why we are still pursuing some macro that's still a power site. Again, this is a capacity, this is a service intended to serve capacity.
Chip, if I could, what's the coverage from that small cell?
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile radius?
All right. Well, does anybody have a question at this point? Ed?
One of the concerns that residents of the town had during the last ordinance change was having towers close to homes, the threat of whatever kind of radiation that caused cancer, so on and so forth. What's the threat with these, even though they're micro, are there similar threats?
No.
None whatsoever?
No. We're still required, we're still found by the parameters, the FED sets though. There's no more risk with a small cell than with a macro site.
You said there's no more, but no less risk?
That's right.
So it's the same, so if you have more of those repeaters, there's more risk?
No. It's not, it's not a cumulative, small cell, take it simple. Small cell's not a repeater. It's its own site. And that's the difference, that's essentially what you get in DAS. DAS is, you've got one radio with a bunch of wires connecting antenna to antenna to antenna, okay? Like in a stadium, we'll have one room on the first floor with radios in it and then five are connected throughout all the concourses. The little antennas in the ceiling that look like Wi-Fi and you never know the difference. That's DAS. Small cell is its own facility. It's one radio, a power panel, cable, and an antenna. That's it. And it provides coverage to that area. So you wouldn't see Verizon Wireless place multiple small cells along Haniford Drive. You'd have the one and that, and that would be it.
Tim, right?
Chip, I have a quick, two questions. First one is, what are you mounting this on? So if you could answer that?
Sure. So on the screen there, I'm going to go to page two. And this is what we call Scarborough Small Cell 1. This is the Cabela's parking lot location. And the location's actually out at the intersection. So here's the four intersection, Cabela Boulevard, top left of the page, of course, Tane Road running north and south there. And on all four corners of that intersection, there are traffic light poles. We've identified the lower left-hand pole as the target. And I'm going to go to the next page and you'll see an elevation view of that pole.
So it's on the traffic signal?
Yeah, it's on the top of the traffic pole.
So my second question, and the attorney may want to chime in on this one, is because I worked really hard on this addendum to our ordinance, which is, how is that not in violation of the telecommunications should not be permitting to be put on distribution scale utility poles and structures? And how do you define distribution scale utility poles and structures?
Well, I think the way I look at this is that it's talking about utility transmission lines and utility poles and transmission lines. So a freestanding pole is not a transmission line. It's not connecting and transmitting. So the way I read your policy here when you enacted this, you were talking about...
I could argue with you, Coach, to interpret.
You can always argue, you can always argue with my words. But you just use the word utility poles. And so we're stuck with that word and it uses distribution, uses the word distribution.
Distribution scale, so that means, okay.
So the term utility pole itself is not defined in your ordinance, but I think utility facilities is.
So it's open to interpretation?
Utility facilities is defined. And so, I mean, it's the closest we have. And that talks about things like transmission. I don't have that front of me. I printed it and I had it. But it talks about the transmission of things like data.
Well, with DAS, I think that people are concerned about.
And so at least the way I read this, this is not a transmission utility in the sense it's not transmitting anything like you're saying.
Receiving, right.
It's just a standalone light pole.
Yeah, but when you add, when you add the cell thing, you're transmitting things that some people don't like.
Right.
And the intent, and when do you get into the intent of an ordinance also? As opposed to, you know, you can play with words all day. You know, as you know legally, you know, words have different changes of meaning, dah 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 dah. But the intent of this was to prevent things like this occurring in neighborhoods was the thought of it. So I, and I'm, I can just see it coming that you're going to, we're going to have some opposition from folks who are going to say, this is the camel's nose under the tent with allowing it in neighborhoods. So that's just why I...
I would encourage you, I've tried to think of a similar circumstance in a residential area that's not a utility pole or transmission line of some sort. I think frankly, this didn't come up as I recall, and it might have been an oversight.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I'm just laying that out.
But the residential application like this seems far and few between, just practically speaking, these sorts of facilities that aren't utility poles or transmission lines, in my way of thinking, virtually don't exist in residential areas.
I mean, I just want to, I just want to go on record though that I have a concern about this, given what we went through with the cell phone ordinance. And then, I mean, and I was the person who brought forward this amendment to the ordinance because of concerns from folks about having these transmitter receivers, whatever, all over town. That's what it amounted to. My other, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question while we...
Can you, before you leave that though?
Yeah.
It seemed all of that discussion centered around residential neighborhoods. And everyone who voted that night, I thought, was voting on the basis that we were restricting DAS systems from residential utility poles. That's at least what I understood was the nature of it.
Right. And you...
So that when you...
But again, and so now we have this, so this is going to be another potential issue. That's all that I'm...
The other part of your question is the other location. It's worth just putting it out there. Chip mentioned Cabela's, just so you can appreciate the Haniford. Was that your second question?
I forgot what my second question was. No, I know what it was.
I'm not going anywhere.
No, before I forget, because I'm getting old. Is, and again, this is probably more towards plane than towards chip. But so is this going to be open to AT&amp;T and whatever, whatever? Or is it going to be strictly Verizon? Because the intent again of our ordinance is to have as many co-locating as possible on these systems that go in.
Yeah, the requirement for co-location is on the macro sites, on cell tower sites. So as I understand, they're following under the telecommunications facility definition, not the transmission tower definition. So, and the reason they're before you guys tonight is that they are approaching the town to lease space on town infrastructure to do this. And I think that, depending on how the council feels, that's at least an opportunity for you guys to decide where you want to work, if you want to work with them, number one. But if you do, in some areas, you can decide where you want to lease town infrastructure. If there may be commercial areas, perhaps you're more comfortable than residential areas as Tom was suggesting. Because the alternative is they could apply to just the zoning board and planning board and maybe get approved to put one on the roof of Cabela's. Or, you know, same installation, just on a different building or structure in the same area. So in some ways, it gives the council some kind of control as to where they go.
Yeah, that would bypass the council entirely.
So to that point, because I wasn't here, what prevents any company going to Cabela's and asking to put it on top of their roof if the ordinance does not allow it, correct?
Ordinance allows it.
Allows it, yes.
So they have to go to the planning board and then in some zones, both the planning board and the zoning board.
So I have two questions. One is very aesthetic and minor. If you can go to the picture, I think it was an aerial view of the... So the question I have is, what is the height and width of the actual cell that goes on top of the light, right there, I believe? What is, oh, so it goes in the back. Oh, that's a different picture. That's a very different consideration. Okay, that's, but that's nice to see.
Different picture means it's a different location.
Yes, but that answers my question. I don't need to explain. So the question I have is, what is the net benefit to the town to agree to this with Verizon versus AT&amp;T, Sprint, or any other company?
I don't know if there's a benefit from one company over the other. I think their operational lease revenue...
They're operating over another company right now.
Right. No doubt.
No, I understand that. But so what happens when another company comes forward, regardless of who they are, and wants to do the same? Are they going to have three, five, six of these on one pole? So what prevents us from, you know...
I think structurally, and Chip knows better than I, I think one can be accommodated on this type of infrastructure, like a light pole or a traffic light pole. So that sort of the structure and its integrity prevents more than one on one particular pole. I don't think anything prevents AT&amp;T from coming to you and wanting to strike a deal on a different piece of town infrastructure.
You're talking about the weight-bearing capacity of the pole? Is that the limiting factor for putting just one of these on a light pole? Is that...
It's pulled 50 volts weight and wind loading and physical mounting space. And if you look at this, look at this light pole, we've got our one can antenna, as it's called. It's ten inches in diameter by two feet tall. We've got one piece of cable coming down. We've got our radio on the left-hand side and our meter on the right-hand side. It's used up. If I were, if I were AT&amp;T and I came across Verizon, I wouldn't go for pole 1.1. I'd just go 100 feet down the road and go for pole 1.2. It'd serve the same thing, you know? You're not going to see somebody ask for the same space on the same pole, something like this.
So just, because I didn't get, so what is, I'm still looking for what the net benefit is because if I compare this to, let's say, a utility pole, my understanding, and I'm not a utility guy, but my understanding is that the poles are owned by CMP. And then if anyone wishes to attach and wire, they rent space. So the question I have is, so the net benefit of allowing that to another company for CMP is that they get some type of lease agreement and some type of economic benefit? Is there an economic benefit for us, lease net?
With non-negotiated terms, but there would be lease agreements and there would be monthly or annual, something associated with that.
This is just kind of an opening discussion if we want to even look at it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Just to note, knowing, you know, this Haniford location, the reason our utility poles is that all the electric is on the ground, at least on Haniford Drive. So there's no utility pole that exists. If Verizon Wireless isn't able to come to terms at this location at this pole, they could literally go probably 100 feet into the parking lot, which is privately owned by Haniford, assuming that it would work for their needs, and negotiate their own deal. And we wouldn't have much to say. They would go through the same planning board and perhaps zoning board process, but it would bypass us altogether. So the benefit is lease revenue.
I just want to make sure that was out on the table for people.
And I, the proposal, the proposal is really a master agreement with the town, okay? Let's get to the legalese, poise ourselves for future opportunities. You know, the town isn't locking itself into saying, oh, we have to give Verizon office space. No, we'll still have to go through each individual property. We'll have its own site lease agreement. So the master is done in a way. We've spent the money on the attorneys. Now we move to individual site lease agreements. I contact Dan, Tom, say, hey, guys, you know, we were looking at going into the section over here next to CMP's antenna on the utility pole. I understand your code isn't allowed for that. Instead, we'd like to go on top of the fire station. There's a possible third site, so on and so forth. So in each, each location, each site, we have to pass muster with council or Tom, however you set it up, and then planning board or zoning board.
I have a question before, let me insert, and I'm sure who's next. But let me just insert one question. One of my bigger questions was, talk to me about the liability or if we incur any liability. One, if the pole falls or for whatever reason, let's say, like, you know, somebody hits the light pole and it falls down, does it become our responsibility to put it back up?
I think that's something that you can lease around. So I can't remember what, I've seen some, they proposed here and we haven't done much work on it yet because they wanted to talk about it. But there can be certain indemnities in there and that sort of thing. I think you generally put back in the language.
It's very versatile right now, but there's certain concessions that we would certainly make. Does that make sense?
I guess the...
Because you're in the driver's seat in terms of, you know, being the, let's say, here, less forested. That's something that you could negotiate around.
Negotiate. My next question is along that same thought. So who bears ultimate responsibility if something happens to the pole? But my second question ties into that of what happens and who bears the responsibility if this thing, but falls off and hits a car or something, you know, who bears that responsibility?
Well, again, I think from the council's perspective, we want to say that we don't have responsibility for that. And we make that clear in the lease. And that's easy, yeah. I mean, that's something that we would just say that as part of the agreement to allow you to put it on the pole, that we, you know, we don't take any responsibility for what may happen to that.
I think it would be Peter first, but, and then I thought I saw another hand, but we'll go with Peter first and somebody was on the...
The question, I'm not sure if, and I think it was kind of, I think you kind of started the question. But if we agree with this with Verizon, assuming this isn't an exclusive deal, so there, you know, it's reasonable, obviously, to start to approach the town. But if we accept the deal with Verizon, does that then obligate us in some way by anything that's in this ordinance that we have to then allow all the others sort of an equal opportunity to be in the space?
I don't see any obligation.
So you don't see any obligation? Once we open that door, that we don't...
You would take each proposal...
On individual merit?
Right.
And there'd be no precedent setting or anything that would...
Other than the general rules related, you know, the telecommunications rules, where you can't favor certain, you know...
Which are outside completely of this phase of leasing. If you're a landowner, I contact you, our property, yes or no? I said, you have complete, it's carte blanche what you want to do. There's no precedent. Only when you get into the permitting of it can it get fuzzy.
That's right, yeah.
Because I think the other thing I heard, the concern that was being talked about, one is concern about the radiation, that type of thing. And also just the aesthetics of having all of these things all over town, all the corners and other things. So just, that was the genesis of my question. Dan, just so that I think we all are reminded of what the ordinance allows and doesn't allow, telecommunications facilities. And could you just talk about how they are allowed under our zoning and the stealth aspect also? Because I think it's been a while since we dealt with it.
Yep. The way you structured the ordinance is, you know, views and compatibility and kind of buffering were a very big component of what you reviewed. And that's why you started out by saying, if there's existing towers up there, add to them. They're already up there on the land suite, et cetera. That's the first test. And then you decided that industrial zones, you know, adding new cell towers makes sense. They're already allowed in those zones. They're compatible with what's going on in those areas. And then you said, if those don't work, those are, and those two things are defined as transmission towers. Those are the towers versus what we're talking about fall under telecommunications facilities, which is the zoning term for these antennas that would be, would go on a building or a structure like we're talking about this evening. And under that category, if they're visible, like these would be, then they would be reviewed by the planning board in most commercial zones because the planning board is used for reviewing aesthetics and development of commercial zones. It would also be in residential areas where there's more concern about compatibility and aesthetics. It would be reviewed by both the planning and the zoning board. So I kind of have belted some suspenders and additional review to make sure they fit in. Again, if they're visible, if they're stealth, meaning fully enclosed, you can't see them, and not altering the exterior of a building, then they don't need planning board or zoning board review. They go and apply to the code office for a permit. And they need to show how they're stealth, both the antenna as well as any ground-mounted equipment that has to be screened so that it's not visible and that there's not concerns about views and aesthetics and compatibility. And then, I guess lastly, I mentioned at the beginning is the last step... And then, I guess lastly, I mentioned at the beginning, is the last step is then, if none of those work, you can go for the new cell tower in the overlay areas, which are those limited areas the council looked at and felt that they were really rural, low-density areas with a significant acreage requirement and setback requirement, and a lot of standards for review to make sure that they fit into the landscape. So that's, of course, not this, but telecommunications facilities is what we're talking about.
So that's why telecommunications facilities can be put in church towers, even though the church might be dead smack in the middle of a residential zone, and there's no review of that whatsoever, I guess.
Right.
Just want to make sure everyone understood that.
Yeah, I mean, under federal law...
Because there's no aesthetic impact, and we by law are not permitted to take into account health impacts. And if that appears to be the basis of our, any portion of the basis of our decision, we subject ourselves to tremendous risk. So that's how that gets resolved, and we just need to understand what the scope of what we're, what our authority is.
Does this require us to go back and make changes to our ordinance?
Depends on how you interpret the language.
Sorry, I asked.
But I think that's okay, because that's why I asked Jean Marie. I would have said, what I was voting for that night, and I voted for it, was that there weren't going to be these cans of small cell technology in residential neighborhoods, visible, because of the aesthetic impact, and that was the argument that was made. Because people realize that they, while there were many in the audience who were pressing this issue based on health, we ourselves were making the decision based on aesthetics.
And that was what I said.
Yeah, exactly. So I thought, I thought that was, if you're sort of saying, what's the legislative history of this thing, so as to interpret it? It was a residential point. And that's why I feel comfortable with this now.
And the other component of it was that utility poles and utility lines were, are clearly, you know, they provide the network throughout all residential areas. They're kind of pervasive, obviously, and that was a concern, and the DAS technology is known to utilize that electrical infrastructure. I think that's why they're drafted this way.
DAS was kind of, was kind of a pole to pole to pole with structures on the poles. And so there was, as you sort of enter your way into a residential setting, it's all over the place. Whereas this is a single tower, hardwired, and it covers a quarter, a quarter mile in all directions.
So to answer my question, do we have to make any changes or not?
I would have said no, because I thought that this is not inconsistent with what I thought we voted on when we all voted, but...
I'm just concerned because it's a different technology, that's all.
Yeah.
So, any other questions?
Sean? So what is, so this kind of goes into, what is the next step, which is around, do we need to change ordinance? Is this going to be a council action item in which we set the precedent, and therefore doesn't have to go to planning board? Or do we approve it, or reject it, and then it still goes to planning board? I mean, what is the next step?
Well, that was my next thing out to all of you guys. What direction would you like to go? Certainly, you know, there's either or, either we're going to lease and direct the manager to start preparing some of those negotiations between the two, or we can send it back through the process of ordinance to craft language to include this. I have my own personal thoughts about that, which I will add real quick. I don't think this falls too far outside of the purview of that commercial. So for myself personally, it doesn't make or break me to put this on the poles, because as indicated, it can happen 50 feet from there on the private property. So it's likely that this is coming, it's just, do we want to be as the municipality, the folks that make a little bit of money on it? Or do we want to let the private sector make the money on it? So I personally don't have a preference either way, but I'm happy to support and direct, like I said, if we could direct Tom to go somewhere with it, it would be helpful.
Is this meant to only be in commercial areas? Is that what the agreement is, strictly coming from...
No, that's not how the lease is written, that's the intent of the, that's the intent of the technology. It's intended to serve densely populated areas, shopping centers, beachfronts, malls, that kind of thing. You're not, again, I wouldn't, I would never picture us wanting to install one on Broad Turn Road. That's a macro site project, not a, you know, not a small...
I might add one last, and then you, myself personally, I think it's a little more of a, you know, not that I want to rule the world, but I think control-wise, we have better leverage in a contract agreement versus a broader, you know, open ordinance of just put them up anywhere. I would, myself, prefer to have some kind of a detailed lease about where we're willing to have them and where we're not.
That's part of the deal. I was actually going to go down the same path, about the details about where they are. And so it's, to me, it's about also, maybe rather than in the ordinance, is whether or not the council should develop a policy regarding the town managers, authorities be able to make a decision around, so what if AT&amp;T comes, does it have to come back to the council every time? And what are the standards for his consideration to approve a contract, or for him to approve going forward? We should have a standard process that allows others to understand the decision process that we make today, that guarantees that in that policy that, oh, I mean, with all due respect, business climates change, and while you can tell me today that there is no intent, the business climate tomorrow might be, or in five years, is that we want to put it into a residential area. So, you see what I'm saying? So I think that there needs to be a policy or something in place that sets into place or to, you know, into stone what the standards are for consideration. And for me, that allows the manager then to manage the issue going forward, so it doesn't have to come back to the council every time a new proposal comes forward.
I'm trying to think of it, Dan, I, you know, stands up, stands up to be just...
I could see us authorizing the town manager to negotiate a master lease agreement, and that in it, we would require that none of the review processes presently called for by our ordinance be preempted. They would all, so that if the proposal is to put it in a particular zone that doesn't allow it, then it has to go both to the planning board for site plan review, and the zoning board for a variance. And that, every, my expectation is that it would never meet the variance test, so it'd always be turned by...
Do you want to add that to the existing ordinance? Is that what you're...
No, I think it could be accomplished through a master lease agreement.
Master lease.
Yeah.
And that, that, a master lease becomes policy. That's what is approved by the council, and that's what he has to use going forward.
The other option, arguably more, certainly more comprehensive, is to deal with, for the council to deal with these on a case-by-case, site-by-site basis. And I don't have a sense whether we're going to be having dozens of these come forward, or these are the two, and we have, we don't hear another one, frankly. So I don't have a good sense of that, but given the level of sensitivity and interest in the matter, I'm not sure unless we are able to articulate very clear guidance to the manager, if I want that authority, frankly.
Why, you're paying the big bucks, buddy.
You could also just suggest it's a master lease agreement, which would be, you know, silent in terms of location, but have that negotiated, and then each, each time it comes for this proposed location, that could be brought to the council first. And, you know, so it wouldn't be Tom's decision at that point, but he could get the master lease agreement together. Yeah, it's not that I'm fearful of taking the decision, I think by bringing it to council, it exposes it to a larger audience. You know, affairs happening in my office aren't necessarily helpful, not that I'm trying to keep them private, but these affairs are televised.
Sure, that sounds, I'm kind of looking around the room, thinking we have a head note on that, that there's a master agreement, and as the individual projects come up, we come to council. Is there anything else anybody would, maybe like to add at this point?
With that direction, what would come back to you, is that master lease, and it will address the issues of liability, identification, lease revenue, all those sorts of things? So we'll come back to you for, you know, a more in-depth conversation around the particulars.
All right.
Okay, great, thank you for your...
And we'll start us up another.